Time now is 7:00 PM. I will call this commission meeting to order. At this time, I please ask everyone to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices. Your greeters at the door tonight is Deputy Public Works Director Kevin Gray and Human Resources Manager Samantha Potts. Starting from my far right and your far left, we have Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart, City Clerk Susan Daughery, Deputy Mayor, Zone 1 Commissioner Lori Tolland.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
Zone 2 Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening. Welcome.
And to my left and to your right, we have Zone 3 Commissioner Kristen Deaton.
Good evening, everyone.
Zone 4 Commissioner Howard Brierley.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
City Manager Joy Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, and we have Sean Finlayson in the front row. Deputy City Attorney Anne Margaret Emery. And to my far left and to your far right, we have Police Chief Jesse Godfrey. And we do not have Fire Chief Howard Bailey here. We have the Deputy Chief Corde and I am Mayor Jason Leslie. At this time, I'd like to call up Chaplain Sam Ricardo of Advent Health to do the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, as we enter the Thanksgiving season, we thank you for our city of Ormond Beach. We thank you for the people who reside in our city and form the various communities in our town. Tonight, we also thank you for our city leaders and all who are here tonight to hear the business matters of our city. Bless us with your wisdom and guidance so our city shines as a beacon to all. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. Thank you, Chaplain, for coming out. Okay, moving on to Presentations and Proclamations, section of the agenda. Today, we have two proclamations and one presentation. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please direct your attention to the screens up above.
We started the Police Foundation for the simple reason that we decided to raise money from the private sector to provide for services, education, training.
My name is Gail Lemrand. I've been in the Daytona, Ormond area since 1978. Law enforcement, what they do for all of us. Really, really proud to be associated with the Ormond Police Department.
The beginnings of all this started many years ago when the former mayors of Ormond Beach wanted to pool their resources together and do something for the greater good.
The K-9 that works on my Delta Shift was purchased through the Foundation. I went to the Southern Police Institute Command Officers Development Course, which was a 10-week program, which was fully funded by the Foundation.
These foundations help us train our officers, equip them with technology and equipment. That just makes me feel better as a police chief and as their leader. So on behalf of the men and women that work here at the Ormond Beach Police Department, we want to thank a heartfelt thanks to the citizens of our community that support us. We obviously couldn't do it alone. We need your cooperation. We need your participation. And to the Ormond Beach Police Foundation, you guys are rock stars. Thank you so much for helping us out and supporting us. You are truly appreciated.
The Commission and I would not be the people standing before you today if it weren't for the incredible individuals who came before us. We'd like to take a moment to express our gratitude to the Ormond Beach Police Foundation for their generosity and support for our community. At this time, I'd like to invite Dwight Selby, Ed Kelly, and Carl Persis to come forward to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Ormond Beach Police Foundation. Good to see you guys. Yes. Before I go through their proclamation, I'm going to give each other a microphone here to say a few things. I'll start with you, Dwight.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Well, a couple of things. First of all, Fred Costello is the fourth Director of the Police Foundation right now. Fred moved to North Carolina a couple of years ago. He sends his regards. He's sorry he can't be here. He certainly wanted to be here. Secondly, we are going to be expanding the board. We're going to be adding many more directors. So we're looking for people who are interested in public safety and who would want to be a part of that to let us know that you want to be a part of that, and there'll be a process to do that. The third thing is that yesterday, we, in a ceremony at the Police Department, we honored Gail Lemrand. And I think Gail Lemrand is known pretty well throughout the area as somebody who has been extremely giving. Well, he's been our single biggest supporter of the Police Foundation and has made a couple of very large donations, too. So we made a presentation to him, and his fiancee was there also, Jill Simpkins, and it was very well received. And today, I got a call from the chief because Gail had, Gail Lemrand had visited the chief, and he said he created the opportunity for us to raise $200,000 for the Police Foundation by putting up a $100,000 matching gift. And then, his fiancee Jill, she immediately gave $25,000. So the first 50 is already in the bank, okay? So we need to raise $75,000, and we'll have $200,000 additional funds in the Police Foundation. So we're really, really excited about that. And to give you, you saw some of the things the Foundation has purchased for the Police Department. One of the things that's on the radar right now is mental health counseling that's available to all of the sworn officers as well as the unsworn employees in the Police Department. And they can access that either by phone or by text or email with people who are qualified to consult with them, counsel them through the challenges that they face, both personally and professionally. And we're excited about evaluating that and providing that for the officers of Ormond Beach. With that, I'll hand it to Ed.
I think you said it all. It is a very important volunteering work that we do. We are being able to supply things to the Police Department that takes the pressure off of the Commission trying to fund everything because there's no way you can fund every need. And one of the biggest ones, I think, is some of the training that we've sent in officer development so that we can keep those good officers that we have here that are rising up the ranks, they can become future leaders of our community. So those are just some of the big ones, I think, that we do.
Well, you guys, as always, said it very, very well. All I can add to that is I think that we have in Ormond Beach probably the best police chief in the entire state. I think he needs to get a round of applause and show our appreciation. And I just think that all of us out there, we have our favorite organizations and charities. We all get asked all the time, you know, write a check for this one and that one. But I just can't think of a, really a better one, particularly for the citizens of Ormond Beach, to write a check to support your police officers. They are the only organization that the men and women who serve put their lives on the line each and every day. What could be more important than that? They are risking their lives to protect you and me. So as we move on and the Foundation becomes a little more popular and widely known, perhaps you'll be having an opportunity to write that check, too, and help support our Ormond Beach Police Officers. I know they appreciate it. I know the City Commission would, the City Manager would. And so it's a win-win all the way around. So let's all get behind the Ormond Beach Police Foundation. You'll be glad you did.
Thank you for everything you do. And if anybody wants to write a check, we're taking checks right now. Okay, with that said, I'm going to each give you one, each one of these a plaque here, and if you could hold it up, as I go ahead and read the proclamation. We have one extra here. Fred, okay. We'll send that after. Whereas, "The Ormond Beach Police Foundation was established in 2020 by then-City Commissioner Dwight Selby to support the Ormond Beach Police Department by providing funding for training, equipment, and technology not covered by city tax dollars, and to provide financial assistance to the families of officers injured or killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the city of Ormond Beach recognizes the leadership and service of the Foundation's board members, Dwight Selby as President, Ed Kelly as Vice President, Fred Costello Secretary, and Carl Persis Treasurer, all of whom served the city in elected leadership roles and whose dedication has furthered the Foundation's mission and strengthened the relationship between law enforcement and the community. And whereas, Gail Lemart, Lemrand, sorry, an entrepreneur, philanthropist, an active committee member within Volusia County, is a strong advocate for public safety and a valued voice for the Foundation. And the city, his generosity and partnership has directly supported the Foundation's mission. And whereas, the Foundation has made significant contributions to officer safety, operational readiness, and community support through the purchase of essential equipment including a K-9 narcotics detection dog, ballistic shields, drones, less lethal pepperball launchers, cooling devices for patrol officers, initiatives such as the Compassion Fund to assist victims of crime in supporting efforts to enhance recruitment and public engagement. And whereas, the Foundation has demonstrated its commitment through investments in officer education, including a Train, the Trainer Course in de-escalation techniques, Southern Police Institute's 10-week Command Officers Development Course for Supervisors, and the funding of a street legal electric ventelly, I saw that yesterday, golf cart to enhance visibility, mobility, and engagement during parades, school events, and community functions such as National Night Out and Ormond Beach's annual Independence Day celebration. Now therefore, I, Jason Leslie, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim November 4, 2025, as a day to honor the Ormond Beach Police Foundation. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I think we're going to have to check your actions. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And at this time, I'd like to call up Kevin Gray. Kevin? Ah, you are. Now Kevin here is retiring after 36 years, but then I found out that he was gone his 37th year last month. We don't count those months. So it's actually 36 complete, and we're happy to have you here tonight. We did change the locks, though, so you might not be able to come in after you leave. Before I give you, I'll read the proclamation. Do you want to say a few things? The 36 years went by very, very fast. City Hall was not here when I began. Public Works was not here when I began, and we were, we gave a lot of input into building these buildings. Over the years, you've seen a lot of changes, a lot of positive changes for the city. When I came here, I didn't think that I would be here that long, just maybe as a stepping stone, but I guess I liked you all so much, I just stayed. So thank you very much to my family for putting up with me and to the Commission. Thank you, Kevin. Now, we do have a proclamation here and a plaque for you, but before I give that to you, I do have another special gift, and that is the key to the city. Now, this won't open the door, though, if anyone wants it locked, just so you know. Thank you, Kevin. Now we can hold the proclamation up. All right, here we go. Whereas, Kevin Gray began his career with the City of Ormond Beach 36 years ago, starting in field operations and later stepping into groundbreaking role as the city's first recycling coordinator. And whereas, throughout his tenure, Kevin has held numerous positions within the city and has served as a mentor to staff members, imparting his knowledge, experience, and leadership to help shape the next generation of public service professionals. And whereas, Kevin has served the city with distinction as Deputy Public Works Director for the past five years, overseeing vital operations including stormwater management, fleet services, street maintenance, and roadside care. Kevin's work has ensured safety, efficiency, and continuity of essential public services through his leadership, extensive knowledge, and unwavering dedication. And whereas, beyond professional contributions, Kevin has enriched the community through his lifelong passion for hockey, coaching countless youth, and fostering a love for the sport while operating Skate and Shake alongside his family. And whereas, Kevin is a devoted family man who now looks forward to enjoying a well-earned retirement, surrounded by his wife, children, grandchildren, and father, embracing the next chapter of life with the same heart and commitment he brought to his career. Now therefore, I, Jason Leslie, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim November 4, 2025, as a city to recognize Kevin Gray. Congratulations.
He wants his allowance, though.
Okay. Next up, I'd like to invite FDOT to come up to present.
All right. Thank you. Well, good evening, Commission. My name is Jim Stroes. I am the Director of Transportation Development for FDOT District 5. I'm here to present on a project that we have programmed for Nova Road in Ormond Beach. The purpose of this presentation is just to provide an update on the project. I also want to highlight some key improvements that we have planned, and then answer any questions that the Commission may have before we prepare, whoops, for our public engagement, which is scheduled for tomorrow evening. All right, so on this slide here is a project overview. Looking at a zone map before, I think that this project actually touches all four zones of the city. Some of it might only be a couple hundred feet here or there, but it's a project that does affect the entire city. The project is just under four miles, and it starts at Flomitt Street and extends north up to US 1. And the primary improvement for this project is to resurface the existing pavement. The project will also target key areas with access management changes to address crash trends that have been identified along the corridor. And I'll get more into the access management in a few slides, but the improvements will consist of a 16-foot raised median from Stairway 40 or Granada Boulevard up to Wilmette, and a couple median, and a median modification also at Arroyo Parkway. There also is a new traffic signal that's planned at Old Kings Road, which is across from the Publix Plaza. And lastly, there's going to be several improvements along the corridor to the existing traffic signals. As leaders of the city, I'm sure you're aware that Nova Road Corridor has experienced several pedestrian and bike crashes. And this slide here specifically shows the area along where the concentration is mostly identified, and that's near Granada Boulevard up to Wilmette. There also has been several fatal crashes along the same segment, and the improvements that I'm going to cover are proposed to reduce the potential for those fatal crashes occurring in the future. So as I mentioned earlier, the section of roadway between Granada and Wilmette is designed, is going to be designed to remove that existing two-way left turn lane that exists today, which will be replaced with a 16-foot raised median that can be graced and landscaped. You'll see from this view, which was what we refer to as our typical section, the proposed roadway widths, as well as the locations of the six-foot sidewalks, which will remain on the outside of the road, right at the edge of our right-of-way line, which are depicted by those red lines. That's basically where the state property ends and where the private property begins. You also notice that we do have a 12-foot wide lane on the outside. This lane is intended to be the wider option for larger vehicles like buses and trailers and things of that nature. I hope that you can see this. If not, we'll send the presentation to you all so you can zoom in, but this is essentially an aerial view of the corridor, which shows the locations of the median openings that are proposed with our access management plan. You can see that there are median openings, I'm sorry, I should say, north is to the right, but you can see that there's median openings that are proposed at Stert House Drive as well as Shadow Lakes Boulevard. I also want to circle back on that new traffic signal there that's located at Old Kings. This improvement will provide an additional protected signalized crossing for pedestrians and bicyclists when they want to cross Nova Road. And this kind of goes back to our goal of improving the pedestrian and the bicycle safety along the corridor. Often, we'll get questions about the benefits of access management, and this graphic, I feel, does a pretty good job of explaining those benefits. The red dots are all conflict points where vehicles could potentially cross paths and experience a crash. So the picture on the left is a full median opening, which has all the movements from the side streets, through movements, left turns. And then the picture on the right is after access management has been implemented, and you can see that those conflict points are reduced by 75%. So the primary benefit to access management is the reduction of these conflict points, which equates to improved safety. Earlier in the presentation, I had identified the majority of those access management improvements are north of Granada, but there is also going to be a modification to Arroyo Parkway. This was a location that came to our project team's attention based on a concerned citizen. They had reached out and expressed some safety concerns with that location. So we performed a traffic study and recommended the modification to a directional median opening at this intersection. And this diagram shows some of the adjacent locations that the drivers from the side street will be able to perform U-turns. So the good news is, is that our design for this project is only months away from completing. And then, since we do not need right-of-way, all the improvements do fit within the state property. We are expecting to start construction on this as soon as next summer. And in closing, I just kind of want to touch on that community engagement event that I referenced in the beginning. It's scheduled for tomorrow evening at the casings, starting at 5:30. Notifications were mailed out last month, but I really want to take a moment to identify this event. These meetings are extremely important to our team to get feedback from the community. In fact, I feel like we had a really successful engagement a couple of years ago with the A-1A Corridor, which was a good example of us getting feedback from the city, from the citizens, modifying our design, and then providing a project that essentially the city can be proud of, the leaders can be proud of, and that the city is supportive. And again, that's going to be our goal for this project as well.
So, thank you for that, by the way. And before I open up for some questions, are you able to go back to the slide on Nova? That was in the beginning part.
The aerial slide?
No, further back, goes towards the beginning. Yeah, right there. Is that, no, that's Nova Road, Granada. There you go. So do we have, are we going to have a bicycle lane on Nova?
There will not be a bicycle lane, no.
Okay.
Or I should say, north of Granada, there will not be a bicycle lane.
Okay. But that's, is that an area that had a lot of pedestrian crashes and bicycle crashes, it looks like here?
Yeah, the majority of these crashes were crossing Nova Road. So we are providing the additional crossing at Old Kings, a signalized intersection. It'll be a red, yellow, green traffic signal that will provide a signalized crossing for pedestrians and bicyclists.
Questions? Commissioner Brierley?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just one question. On your signalized, on your signal updates through the corridor, would you all consider changing out the protected reds to protective passive reds?
Just so that I understand, so right now, there's the three-section head with the red, yellow, green arrows, and you want the flashing yellow arrow? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir. So where you have, like, for instance, when you're on, like, say, Nova Road at Hand Avenue, and you have the protected red, and you may have somebody to, you know, if, say, you're heading southbound, you may have nobody coming northbound for, you know, 20 seconds.
Sure.
Where you could safely make that left turn. I didn't know if you are going to change those out to the protected passive.
So that is not part of this project, but that is certainly something I'll make note of, and we can take a look at it. There are times where, not knowing all the history, but there are times where it may have been changed to that protected-only phase because of a crash problem in the past. But I'll have the team look at it, and then we'll circle back.
Yeah, that Gulf Avenue as well, because there, every once in a while, you just pull up there and you just kind of unnecessarily wait because there's no one coming, and you could have, you know, it could be a safe.
And you said Nova Road at Hand as well as the other traffic signals along.
Nova in Hand and Nova in Gulf. Those are the two I can think of, right offhand.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you. I'm optimistically cautious. After the most recent Granada project, I would love if you could maybe assure the community that you've taken into account some of their feedback and some of the feedback that we have given regarding the raised medians and some of the issues that we had. Is there anything that you can maybe speak to to say, you know, we've listened and we're hoping to make sure that this project is not going to go to that effect?
Yeah, I know. Definitely want to take advantage of feedback that we've received on previous projects, some of those, and those are more speed management improvements. They had some raised elements in the bulbouts, and those have been removed from the project. So as a result of coordinating with city staff.
Thank you. I have one more for you that I'll get with you later regarding the bump out that I have an issue with, Sean. Thank you.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you. Can you go to the next slide, please?
Yes, sir.
One more. Maybe another one. There we go. So if I'm looking at this correctly, the one on the left would be Nova headed northbound.
I believe, I believe this is looking northbound. It's, so they should be identical, but yes, it's.
Sure. Okay, so on the right, then, we'll say headed north at Granada and Nova. That lane, currently far-right lane, is a right turn only? Are we turning that into a straight lane?
No. So I should say that this is, or I'll defer to Gene. Are we turning it into a through lane, a shared through right? If you don't know.
I saw the Granada going to the intersection. Everybody knows that.
Okay. But the raised median here is north of Granada. Okay, but these, the raised median here is north of Granada.
Okay.
So.
So my concern here is, that far-right lane should be a no-turn on red, because when I go to the office every day headed on Granada, I have to do a U-turn and almost get hit by people running that red light constantly, and I know several people in my office do that as well. Also, on going northbound, is that going to stay as a right turn only, or is that going to be a through as well?
So did you, I thought this scenario you just described was a northbound right?
Both of them, actually. North and southbound, those far-right lanes are turn onlys.
Let me see if I can go ahead to one more. Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so both of those will remain, I guess, lane, lane-drop scenarios? So the right, it is a right turn only for both northbound and southbound?
Okay, is there anything we can do at that stirhouse where it comes out there? I have concern because so many cars, even though we put up poles and different things that try to deter people from turning left, and we had a death there, a motorcycle death there a couple of years ago, and I see that's open, I know we have to have it open, I guess, for cars to come in southbound, so I don't know if there's anything else we can do there.
We, we can, that was actually something that, Gene Verano is our project manager, he's here, is my backup, my phone-a-friend.
Those are my only concerns at this point, and I really appreciate y'all
We can modify that.
coming and presenting tonight, so thank you.
And just so I write it down correctly, the request is no right turn on red movements for northbound and southbound at Nova and Granada.
Yes.
I'd say while you're, while you're putting arrows up there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. So, the one question, you answered it with, the mayor asked about the bike path that you don't have, but would it make sense on that wider lane, on the outside lane, to have the bicycle symbol there, so people that are riding bikes, that would be their lane, and those that are driving would know that that's a potential shared pathway?
So, I would say typically, there is a symbol, it's called a share-o, which is where the bicycles and vehicles can share the lane. Those are usually placed for lower-speed roadways.
So we're too fast.
Yeah, so this one here, on a higher-speed road, we'd actually want to provide a full five-to-seven-foot bike lane, and we just unfortunately don't have the room.
Is the speed limit changing?
Speed limit is not changing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Commissioner Riley?
If I may, just to Commissioner Sargent's point, I think what you could do on Nova Road, I think the problem becomes when you have the east and west green arrow, just put a blank outside, no right, like we have over in Halifax and, and North Halifax and Granada.
Gotcha.
That'd probably be the solution there.
Sure.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you for coming out, sir.
Absolutely.
Maybe we'll see some of us tomorrow.
Sounds good.
More questions. Okay, we're going to move on to audience remarks. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting, or any items on the consent agenda. Each person will be given a total of three minutes. As a reminder, please be sure to state your name for the record, and we kindly ask that you do your address as well. So, at this time, I'd like to call up Irene Tard, Tardo? Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't, okay, sorry about that. Couldn't read the script.
Okay, hello, Irene Tador, 340 Cumberland Avenue. Our neighborhood is drowning with nowhere for any storm water to drain. Volusia County, we've recently heard, has $80 million to expand storm water capacity to improve drainage, reduce flooding. We need a lot of help. Seven blocks around us have retention ponds and working canals. We're the only block without a retention pond or working canal. We need this dredged desperately so we have a place for storm water to drain. Back in February of 2020, the, our neighborhood experienced historic flooding, according to your engineers, and they were supposed to have a $12 million grant, nothing happened. Back in January 27 of 2020, you hired a geostatic consultants to put together a storm water master plan, hundreds of pictures, workshops, talked to neighbors, all the engineers walked our whole neighborhood. Nothing has been done. City have always told us that the properties behind us are tidally influenced Class 1, wetlands, unbuildable. I moved here in 1980, and for 24 years I had no flooding until three homes were built on fill dirt, two on Andrews, one on Putnam. My first claim started 24 years later, now I have 10 claims. We know homes built on tons of fill dirt destroy our wetlands. Our wetlands are destroyed, you can't build homes on our wetlands. We were very upset as a neighborhood when dump trucks delivered fill dirt for three days to 480 West Street on 223, 2024. It's one of the worst flooding areas. A huge amount of fill dirt was dumped and a large home was built. This should have been a still town. I don't understand how this home was built, because now our flooding got worse. The worst flooding in 45 years was Hurricane Milton, a rainstorm, and we're underwater. My neighbor with his three little ones was this close to flooding, three kayaks in their backyard, and their, the roads were so covered over with flooding water that their drains backed into the house, and they could do nothing. This is so serious for our neighborhood. I'm begging for help, that something is done for us. I'm there 45 years, and I don't know what to do anymore, I just need help.
Okay.
Okay.
Sean, can you follow up with her?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Yes.
I spoke to Irene ahead of, ahead of the meeting. We've, I've known Irene for 15 years, I will continue to talk to Irene. The first project, the project, one of the projects that were recommended in that GeoSynTech Stormwater Master Plan, one of those was a detailed design study of this area. That project is currently underway utilizing Transform 386 money, so hopefully we are, we are, we are on the tracks to get, to get to the end of this tunnel, and, and, and as I've told Irene, and I've told probably every single one of you there, this area that goes from Sanchez Park down to Granada, Beach Street to US 1, is really where I think that the, our main focus for storm water is for the next, next decade. So Irene, I know, I know what, how it's been for you. We, we, we are working towards it. I know it's been a long, long, long road to get here. I think we're getting there.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Commissioner Sargent has something you want to say, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes. This area, I mean, I was at a resident's house today on Melrose, and she's flooded about six times in the drywall. I mean, it's completely sad what she's going through as well. I don't know if we need to move this up for funding or whatever with our legislative priorities in Tallahassee. That's where I think we can get a lot of money to move these projects forward, so I think we need to get with Doug Bell, our lobbyist, and this needs to be a top priority to get this whole area, up in that area, a resolution sooner than later.
What, what, what we're working on is getting to those shovel-ready plans. We, what we found from legislative funding, from grant funding, having things ready to begin construction gets us, gets us a long way to get that money. That's our goal right now, is to get, get, get there. This area was developed in the 60s, early 70s. A lot of the pipes that we're finding in there are certainly not, not, they aren't ones that our code today would allow, so we need to get those replaced. The title issue is a whole nother issue, but, but we're, this is, this is the area of focus, and this is the area that we know is, is trouble. We know a lot of these homes, we know this house on Melrose, we know Irene's house. We've got those hotspots, and, and we're focused on getting those in care of, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, next up, we're going to call Steve Burde, Burdees, there you go. Hello, Steve?
I'm Irene Tador's life partner. We're together 30 years. I, here's a picture of the flooding we've had. It's actually our backyard there.
Steve, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, you just have to be in the microphone, because, yeah, if you want, you can just stand on the seat there if you want, and just talk in the microphone, because we need to have this recorded.
Right here, okay?
That's good, thank you.
Came from New York at 70, moved to Holly Hill, and then we moved to Ormond 71 or 72, Cumberland Avenue. I've been there over 50 years, off and on. I'm a veteran. I've been coming to these meetings with my family, because they were the first ones on Cumberland Avenue. A builder named Norm Ray, who we were friends with, he built the homes there. My parents bought one of the, one of the model homes. My aunt and uncle bought another home there that was being built, and there were no ponds anywhere. It was all woods over there, dirt roads. And my family had to fight with the city, because Norm thought the city was going to pay for the roads, and they got assessed. So I was a child coming here to these meetings, I've been coming off in over 50 years. And we come here because Alex and Sean have been good, they keep us up to date, and the chain of command, the military, they always say, "Go up the chain of command, here we are." Just, just put in your ear, you know, we need help. They, the Army Corps of Engineer behind Cumberland, where Putnam is, they used to dredge that all the time. Irene moved, you know, she tried to buy property behind her, so she would have the whole, all the way to Putnam, and they said, "No, it's protected wetlands." And well, they ended up building, and they brought, if you go, if you go to Putnam, there's a house on stilts over there. Everybody knows that area. But long story short, we get flooded bad still, and we're just here, the city, thank you for your service, I'm just, please help us out and continue doing your good job. It's been taking a really long time. I know now they're doing the pipes, now they're going to be doing some dredging, but I really believe, I saw the ponds on Cumberland all the way to North Young be dug. There was no ponds there at all. They dug them out. I don't know whether it's the city, Norm Ray, or whatever, and they dredged behind us, and they never dredged there again for 50 years. And if they could dredge that, I don't know if you got to get eminent domain, because now people own over there, I think dredging would help 100%. That's my input. I don't know what you can do about it, that's what I have to say, and thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Next up, I'd like to call Angela Noel.
I'm Angela Noel. I live, or no, whatever. I live at 2700 Ocean Shore Boulevard, but I'm here on 2290 Ocean Shore Boulevard, better known as Seascape condominiums. I had the luck, or whatever, I've been in, for Sean, in constant contact. I've left two messages, and I referenced the times and the dates for your legal department. No response. I need to hear from them on this issue. Your impact fees are not, for the septic desur, is not in alliance with your other terminology in your ordinances. Boys and girls, it was probably not done by most of y'all. I work, if I, as an other federal agent with FEMA, and I was going to tell you, there is, this isn't an aside, I'll take my time, there is 404 mitigation money, which is with your state. And if it's, doesn't have to be damaged in this disaster, but your state emergency got 7% at the six-month mark of what FEMA had for any of your last disasters. And it's usually available first come, first served, so that's where you need to get a grant. Somebody can call me, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'll give you my information. But I disagree with how the fees are done. I do not feel they are legal, and so I really think the legal department should, first of all, return some calls. But we can play this out how we want. And Steve and Spraker, and y'all have all been great. I've seen you, and you, saw you today, but I want to understand how they came about. I want to understand why, let me check, I'm a condominium, I get a commercial water bill. Oh, I'm a condominium, I'm required to pull a commercial permit. Even in my own private residence, it's required. But then, so I'm a duck, I'm a duck, but then when it comes to an impact fee, I'm a goose. Oh, you've got to pay the single-family residents. The last email I sent you was the pipe. Single-family residents, because they send solids to your wastewater treatment plant. I do not know if you are aware, I'm required for a lift station. Therefore, I send you liquid stuff. Individual homeowners send you solids. Now, I didn't ask Sean, and so I don't want to put anyone on the spot. Do you know the cost difference of treating it? I can tell you, but we would appreciate examination.
Thank you, Angela.
And I'm available for any cause. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Next, we have Jane Doe.
So my first request is for the council. I'd like you to do everything you can to stop the FDOT from messing up Nova, just like they did Granada and A-1A. Anybody here who lives here knows how badly that went. They spent taxpayer money to build it and then take it down, and then now, I just walked the bridge this morning, it's still in rumbles. So please do what you can. Number two and number three are for the constituents. They tell you that you have to come up here, I don't have to turn around, I'm talking to them, not them. They tell you that when you come up here, you have to put your name and address on record. You absolutely.
Point of order. I'm being told that you have to direct your attention at the commissioner.
No, I don't. I'm talking to the constituents. This is my three minutes of time.
Point of order, point of order, I'm not, I'm not talking to you, I'm sorry. Point of order, I'm sorry, I'm not talking, I'm sorry. Well, listen, we have, we have procedures here, and I was directed.
My time is running out.
Okay, we'll stop the clock for a second.
I am talking to the constituents of Ormond, saying they do not have to say their name and address, like you say they do.
Okay, we suggested it, first of all. Secondly.
You require, Lori Tallon called out Jason Mayer and said, "You're not saying to get their name and address." Correct?
Excuse me. We can go, you can just direct your attention at us, because that's what I was directed to do by the Palmaterian.
No.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Number three is exactly to this point. They work for us. We are the constituents. They sit on higher ground, and they act like they have the control, and they do not. The fact that constituents sit here and complain about, I've been here multiple times, and constituents sit here and voice their concerns, and they nod, and they don't give you any conversation. They act like you don't matter, and you do. You are their boss. If you had an employee monthly meeting with your employee, right, saying, "How's your review? Let's do it," and your employee just sat there nodding at you, not saying anything, how would you react? You'd fire them. That was curse word being eliminated. You'd fire them. They work for us. This is my three minutes. If they decide that they're not going to respond to me, that's their choice. But it's also our choice to say, "You're not doing a great job." Keep that in mind with people who actually listen to you, and you do not have to say your name and address. That is 100% unconstitutional, whether they recommend it or not. You are a constituent of Ormond or Volusia when you go to the county, you know, county meetings.
Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome, Little League.
The minutes of the October 21st, 2025 City Commission meeting have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Does anyone have any corrections or changes?
Move approval submitted. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those approve, disapprove? Okay, seeing unanimous vote, minutes approved. We're going to move on to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are deemed routine and non-controversial. The action proposed is stated for each item. Unless the city commissioner removes an item from the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will prove all items. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? And if you do, give me one second, because I got to write down.
Move approval?
Second.
I'd like to remove R. Pull R. I'm sorry. So can I get amendment on that to approve minus R?
I'll revise it to move approval absent item R.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
City clerk, could you please read consent agenda seven R?
Disposition item title twenty-twenty-six, City of Ormond Beach Legislative Action Agenda.
Can I get a motion to some approval for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I pulled this item because I know we put our legislative priorities in there for the next session. And before this meeting, I thought like, can we, do we have any other priorities in the city that we can ask from the legislator? And after listening to, as a resident, just a little while ago, kind of reassured me to make sure I ask about it. So I thought maybe Sean or maybe staff can just kind of, you know, really tell us if there's any other projects that we can focus on that would help with flood mitigation.
When Brian and I and Joyce, we met with our legislative assistant, Doug Bell, and he advised us what things are, that the legislature is looking at right now. Water quality initiatives are the big one. And so that's why we took this one to, selected this one to ask for this year. We're looking at reclaimed water, redundant main across Halifax River. We're looking at a sanitary sewer, forced main backup across the river. We've got this project shovel-ready. It's ninety percent, it should be fully designed by the end of the year. We plan on doing this one anyway. We've got budgeted money to do this. We're looking for some money that we can get from this, from the state to help offset that, that will help us to do some other projects. As far as additional projects, we're working with some, some, right now we're working with Volusia County Transform Three Eight Six to hopefully get some money for a stormwater project. I think that all of the projects that we have that are ready to go, that would be good candidates for taking to the legislature, we, we're looking at either alternative funding sources, or this is really our best chance. We were advised not really go too far with, at this legislative session. I think that they're going to be pretty lean and mean. We would really like to focus on one that we can have a good chance of getting. If we've got some other ones, we're open to do it, but on the advice of Doug Bell and Leslie, I think that this was, this was really, they were advising us to kind of really focus on this direction. But if there's, if there's any that anybody would like us to explore, we certainly can do that.
Is anyone, Commissioner Brierley?
I would just concur with what Sean has said. In my discussions with a couple of our legislators, they expect this legislative session in twenty-twenty-six to be even more stringent than twenty-twenty-five. They said we'll be lucky to see much money this year from Tallahassee. So I think this, this project's been in the works for quite some time. It's shovel-ready, as Sean has said, and I think that, I think this is probably one of our more important projects. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yep. I've heard the same thing that Commissioner Brierley just said. And one of the, in my closing comments and listening to the residents this evening as well, I was wondering if maybe in addition to our Transform Three Eight Six, which seems, is a great, great, it's, we have three projects in the works, I think, with that right now, with the county?
We've got five under, under design right now.
Right.
We've got one that we are, is in very late stages of review, that we're looking to get potentially a couple million dollars worth of constructions, which is another shovel-ready project.
Yeah. So thanks to Sean for being really proactive, trying to get that money. But what I was going to bring up to you all is maybe, and this is not the time to discuss it, but maybe look at maybe a large bond that will get some of these projects moved quicker in addition to the Three Eight Six projects. And I know that's something we have to discuss up on the dais, but I think we're all hearing it every day, you know, how horrible the flooding is. And let's just be clear, flooding is really considered flooding when it's in a house. But when water is on your property and it's threatening to your house, it's scary and you, and you want to be able to address it. So I think for, I understand what you're saying. We need to get these things done, Mayor, but maybe, maybe look at bonds or some other way of helping us fund it.
Yes. Thank you.
Yep.
And it's fair enough. I mean, like I said, I just, you know, when I hear about all the concerns from residents about flooding, and I saw the legislative, the other priorities that we put in place, which is, you know, a nice project too, you know, I'm like, you know, hey, is there anything that we can ask for? But, you know, but if that's the direction that the, it looks like the legislature is going to offer to us, then I guess we're going to have to stay on track with that as well. But Commissioner Sargent, you have something you want to say?
Thank you. I think we need to push forward with something to get resolutions to this flooding in this area. It's gotten worse. Whether it's dredging, whether it's whatever it may be, I understand that they look at shovel-ready projects. And I know that the budget's going to be tight and I, you know, to me, it's, if I was a resident sitting out there, that to me screams another excuse, another five years, another, you know. And I don't like that. I get it that there are priorities, but it's, you know, the resident I met with today at her house has no drywall two feet up. Fifth time it's happened to her in a few years. And it's like, where's, you know, it's at the point now where the insurance companies aren't even paying anymore. So I think it's time for us to step in and really get a resolution to this area, whether it's dredging, whether, whatever it may be. We need a resolution and we need to probably fast-track it so maybe it can get added to this legislative year.
Commissioner Brierley?
And I'll also add, if I may, all five of us were over in the land last week at the legislative delegation. And I'm sure each one of you heard, I mean, the, the topic of the day was stormwater and stormwater resiliency and flooding.
Besides Daytona, right?
Yeah. So I think, you know, the legislate, the, at least our legislators know the issues here that they're going to take back to Tallahassee. And you know, we're not the only area where flooding is an issue. I mean, it's happening all around the state. So maybe the legislature will, you know, be a little bit freer this year with money. I mean, again, it's not just Ormond Beach, it's not just Volusia County, it's, it's all over the state. So I'm sure they're hearing it from other areas just beside, you know, besides Volusia County. Thank you.
Agreed. Any other further discussion? No? Oh, Claire, you have something?
Just trying to confirm if there's consensus on revising that. Is that the...
Is there a consensus on revising the legislative priorities?
If there's something we can fast-track to get something for a resolution in this area, whether it's a temporary resolution until we find a permanent solution, but I think we deserve it to our residents to find something in this area. And quite frankly, I understand that they're hearing it from around the state, but we're elected by Ormond Beach residents to take care of Ormond Beach residents. So I'm going to focus on getting money to Ormond Beach.
Agreed.
So maybe we could ask staff to come back to us...
Yeah.
...with some ideas. I know you can't have a dollar amount on that, but, but at least, you know, to help. And I had a conversation today with Mr. Finley about some other issues, flooding issues, some hotspots. You know, maybe we, I know you have a list, Sean, you kept a list of all the hotspots. We had asked you to do that. Maybe we could look at those and just see what we can do. Anyway, it's...
Yeah, I think we all have probably pet projects in our own zones because, as Sean's aware, I took a one-hour golf cart ride with someone in zone four. And, you know, this is why I think I came to y'all back at the workshop and said, not only we need ditch cleaning and dredging, we need road, roadway rebuilding. Because roads, you know, some of the pavement is collapsing in some of these ditches, which make them non, you know, non-functioning. So it's, it's not just one area of the city, it's really the entire city.
And on top of all the infrastructure that we're struggling to improve as well. I mean, it's, it's very compounded and complicated.
Agreed. Commissioner Deaton?
I know one of my projects in my zone is the Hidden Hills, which is the Transform Three Eight Six project, and that's a, that's a priority project. I would, I do concur, I think we need to find some sort of solution, whether it's a creative solution. Kelly, I know, I don't, I don't know how you feel about bonds, but if that's something we can possibly look at, that we can try to remedy some of this quicker. Any sort of creative solutions, I would love if staff could definitely take a look at that. That'd be phenomenal.
Agreed.
And, you know, I, if I may, you all took the first step with this year, with increasing the stormwater fee. That's a, that's going to be, that is not money that's going to go wasted. That's money that's going to allow us to do some of these projects, you know, and to be able to do more for our residents. And so I'll thank you for that. We will take a look here at what products we have. We want to, we want to come up with products that, that have a, have a fighting chance to get, to get some money. We don't want to just put something in there just to, just to put something in there. We want to be taken seriously and so we will do a good job of taking a look here in the next couple of days to find something that has a chance and that we, that with the help of Doug Bell and our people in Tallahassee can get some, can get some...
Can you get to something to us before the year's over?
We're going to have to get to you before probably the week's over here.
Yeah, okay.
So...
I think that this is something we should keep in mind. We keep getting stormwater conversations. I think this is something we should keep in mind coming into the new budget season. This is something that we need to have on the top of our priority list. I know where we want to go budget-wise. I understand that. This is something we have to look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, we have a motion and a second, but I think we're going to have to amend the motion to, to give... No? We don't have to? Okay. Okay, you guys direction? Okay, that's fine. All right. Well, then we're going to move on then.
Need a vote on the motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, call the vote, sorry. Susan, city clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
Do any commissioners wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? I see Commissioner Sargent's hand up.
Comment on item G, the insurance. It kind of goes through all the insurance, but this year, you know, after many years of having slight increases, this year we have a decrease of one percent. I think this shows that when you bring competition to the table, negotiations happen and the residents and the taxpayers save money. You know, we saved on the property and casualty over three hundred thousand dollars year over year. And on this one, we're saving money. So I think that that shows that it did what we wanted to do and provide the best coverage to our employees and at the best price for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Any others that comment? No? Seeing none? Okay, we're going to move on then. We'll move on to eight A. City clerk, please read the legal title for ordinance number two oh two five dash three three.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-three, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five by amending the general fund zero zero one, downtown redevelopment trust fund one zero four, stormwater utility fund one zero seven, airport fund one zero eight, economic development fund one one zero, pension contribution pass-through fund one one three, financing debt service fund two zero five, beachfront park bond fund two two zero, capital improvements fund three zero one, equipment renewal and replacement fund three zero two, public safety vehicle and equipment fund three zero five, transportation improvements fund three zero eight, facilities renewal and replacement fund three one seven, water and wastewater fund four zero one, vehicle replacement fund four zero eight, renewal and replacement fund four zero nine, water system impact fee fund four three four, wastewater system impact fee fund four three five, twenty twenty-four water and wastewater bond fund four four six, solid waste fund four six zero, and general liability fund five zero four, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-three, read by title only.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay. You got that? Okay. At this time, can I have Kelly McGuire, the finance director, come up to speak about the items?
Certainly. Thank you. Taylor, can you put that up? Thank you very much. It was there and now it's gone. So your budget amendments for the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five year primarily consist of projects that need to be carried forward from the twenty-three twenty-four year to the twenty-five twenty-six year. And those are construction projects originally budgeted in twenty-four, some of which were started in twenty-four, but were completed in the twenty-five fiscal year. So we need to move those budgets. They're not new money, but money that's just being moved from one fiscal year to the other. You also have about six million dollars in emergency projects, primarily related to Hurricane Milton, a million dollars for the contract settlement with our solid waste dollar. And then there is about twelve million, just under twelve million, for three water and sewer projects. Those are funded through bonds that were issued in October of twenty twenty-four. And the last item is the fifty thousand dollars in police premium tax. Those are dollars we're getting from the state and those will help to fund our police pension. I'm happy to answer any specific questions. No?
One question, Kelly. Just so that we're transparent. Can you give just an example of what one of these things mean for like somebody in the public that's reading it and looking at it, on what, if they saw it last year on the budget and why it's on the budget this year again?
You're speaking of capital projects specifically?
Yes, yes.
Certainly. So we can take the project across the street, Casson Park. That project was in the budget and out of the budget multiple times over the course of probably about ten years. So it was budgeted originally, right? Three million, I think it was about a three million dollar project. We started in the design phase and the commission at that time said, "We want to reimagine it, right? We're not happy where that's going." So the project was taken out of the budget. And then several years later, the project was put back in the budget, right? And that project budget has to be there in order for you as a commission to authorize a contract. So let's say, for example, we were doing a project like Casson Park and you authorized that contract in September of twenty twenty-four. Well, that's wonderful. You've authorized the contract. The budget is there as it needs to be, but the majority of the money is not going to be spent until October or sometime after that. So now we've moved into a new fiscal year. So we have to move the budget along with that. And it's important to understand that we can have a project budget for a project that appears in multiple fiscal years. That doesn't mean we're spending that money three or four times. We're spending it once, but we have to, we have to meet certain requirements, state, federal, local, and then the government accounting standards for it.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for the finance director? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you, Kelly.
Certainly.
I have some cards here for speakers. And first, I'd like to call Jennifer Bright.
Jennifer Bright, Ormond Beach. Tonight you're here to approve thirty-three point six million in increases to the twenty-four twenty-five fiscal total line item of the budget. I feel the public needs to understand why the city is revising last year's budget. Based off the information supplied within the agenda packet, our city council approved thirty resolutions totaling over twenty-eight million dollars last year. These resolutions are driving eighty-five percent of the increase. Some of the big hitters are the design phase of the police EOC, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, Cessanon Park, two point five million dollars, Fleming Avenue Stormwater, one point two million, Business Park Drive Phase Two Construction, two point three million, Tennis Court Resurfacing, six hundred thousand, Williamson Underground, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, Hudson Well Field, over four point five million, and the State Route Forty and Airport Road Force Main Loop Construction and admin costs over four point six million. Now, I'm not saying this work should not have been done, but most, most of these items should have been included in the original budget so the residents can see where and how this money is being spent upfront. There is not even time to address the other fifteen percent of the increases, which include There is not even time to address the other 15% of the increases, which include the carryforwards from prior fiscal years and the staff purchasing. As we are starting off this fiscal year, we're doing the same thing. This commission just approved the Nova Community Center gym ceiling repairs in an amount of over $99,000. This project was not budgeted, even though the proposal came through dated August 12th of 2025, and the purchase order was signed September 23rd of 2005. So why wasn't this added to the budget? In the last meeting, Yellowstone CPIs were approved for over $50,000, and these items weren't budgeted either. Hopefully, this will not set a trend of many more amendments in raising the budgets in this future year. And if they weren't resolutions that you signed this year, then the data package wrong because it specifies in there what fiscal year those resolutions came from. So if they were in a prior year, as they're trying to say like Cessna and Park, shouldn't it have been approved in a prior year and not approved this year? Thank you.
Commissioner Sargent?
Kelly, question for you. On the tennis courts, that's a FEMA reimbursement, right?
Yes.
So it wasn't budgeted because it was a hurricane damage, and then FEMA, we got money from FEMA, so that's why there's an amendment for that, right?
It's part of the $6 million of FEMA projects. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And the other projects that were just mentioned, those projects were part of the fiscal year 2324 budget, many of them, and they're part of the CIP. So all of that detail is available.
But they should have been tagged. There's one tag for the fiscal year carry on.
Next is Colleen, I'm sorry, I have to call the next speaker. Colleen McManon?
Hello, everybody. Colleen McMahon. I was not planning on speaking today because I'm pretty much going to go radio silent, so we really don't know what Colleen McMahon's doing out there when we're talking to residents and not really letting my brain out for all of you because I sent you multiple emails. And like the resident here said, it's really just shaking your head and say, "Oh, thanks, Colleen." So we're doing a lot of work out here as residents. We're talking to residents. So going to the budget Doge today, what you want us to do is trust but not verify. This does not work in the real world. I will not trust, and I will verify. So when we say when you're looking at the budget on the transparency portal, well, Colleen, that operating budget isn't really what it is. That's all we have to go by. We cannot find the money because it's hidden here, it's hidden here, it's hidden here. Just like Jennifer said, we can't find it. But, oh, you guys all know where the money's going. So when you tell me that we are not up $70 million over a period of three years, our transparency portal tells us that. So how am I going to go to the residents as a candidate and say, "Oh, just trust them"? That's not going to work. I will not trust. So with that being said, you're telling us the budget went up 14%. That doesn't even make sense. So people that do look at budgets, who do manage monies for companies, we know how to follow the money. You're just hoping we don't, but we are. Another thing I want to bring up to attention is the city manager department has six employees. The highest salary for the city, $277,384, with an annual income of, or maybe resident is $67,000. Does that not make sense to everybody else out here? With six employees, it was $1 million, $87,872 for six employees. Period. Kelly, I was glad you were able to verify. We have 20 truest credit cards out there. Thank you very much. Zone 1 communities are speaking out to me. I'm hearing them. Wasteful spending, overgovernment, they don't have fiscal responsibility. So I'm going to be very open and transparent. I have been in touch with Tallahassee. I have been speaking with the, with the Doge CFO. He is very interested in what's happening here in Ormond Beach. During our conversation, he asked me to send him specific things, which I did. He confirmed receipt of those. So on 9/23 is when I sent up the initial information. 10/2 confirmed by him that I have, he has received it, he is reviewing it. And then again today on 10/4, 2:30 PM, the rest of the information went up on the 2025 fiscal year budget. Big things he's looking at is number one priority salaries. He wants to, that was all sent to him. So I will, I will send him up now that we close the year out. Second thing I would like to say is there are ways to save money. We cannot sit here and continue to do the same thing and getting the same outcome and not think that this is insanity for us residents. We are here, we are watching, we are getting together. So know that when this, when this election comes around in November, we're going to be ready. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Any more discussion here from the commission? Any more questions for the finance director? Seeing none? We have a motion, we have a second on the floor. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. City clerk, please read the legal title, 8B, ordinance number 2025-34.
Ordinance number 2025-34, an ordinance of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, further amending Article 1, General Employees Pension Plan and Chapter 16, Pensions and Retirement of the Code of Ordinances, amending Section 16-6 Benefit Amounts and Eligibility, amending Section 16-9 Vesting, Providing for a Benefit Multiplier for Accredited Service Earned on or After October 1, 2025, for Members Hired on and After December 19, 2012, Providing for Severability and Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing an Effective Date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-34, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Can we have Kelly come back up again, the finance director, to speak on the item?
Certainly, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Kelly.
So this is, you're very welcome. This is consistent with the NAGE contract that you approved earlier on the consent agenda. This is the pension piece. This was taken to the General Employees Pension Board, and they are recommending approval unanimously. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the finance director? Seeing none? Okay, thank you. Any discussion by the commission? Seeing none? Okay, city clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Breyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Now we'll move on to staff and commission reports, suggestions, requests, starting with the city manager, Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a review of your upcoming calendar. Your next meeting is November 18th, and that's a regular commission meeting. And then you have two meetings in December. December 2nd is a regular commission meeting, and December 16th is a regular commission meeting. And then you will be off for the Christmas holiday. So just to keep that in mind. As you know, the Loman family is going to be having a celebration of life on Friday at the Performing Arts Center, starting at 11:00 AM, for those of you that are interested in attending. And lastly, we're truly appreciative of the working relationship the city and the Ormond Beach Police Department has had with the Ormond Beach Police Foundation. All the board members of the foundation have served on the dais in some capacity, so they understand firsthand how challenging yet rewarding this work can be. Yet beyond their time up here, they continue to serve our city and look out for us with a great deal of civic responsibility and civic pride. And for that, I'm extremely grateful for their generosity. Our home for the holiday parades will be on Saturday, December 13th at 6:00 PM. And then we have coed basketball registration is underway, and the Marvelous Manatees at the EDC, a free, family-friendly program for students grade K through 12. To learn about Florida's manatees on Friday, November 14th. We will have two sessions from 10:30 AM to 11:00, and 3:30 to 4:00 PM. And there'll be self-guided tours all weekend. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have for me tonight.
So anyone have any questions for the city manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Assistant manager, Claire Whitley.
Good evening. I have a number of workshops that we'll be scheduling with you, so we'll have Jessica reach out with dates, confirm your availability, and get those on the calendar, but I wanted to mention them. As Kelly mentioned earlier tonight, the budget kickoff will be on March 3rd, but prior to that, we have a number of items. Code enforcement, as you know, we're looking at. Tentatively, we have that for January 20th. It's not confirmed, so we'll send emails out to all of you, but it will be around that timeframe. We should have something to bring back to you. As you know, we've got some drive-throughs scheduled for you later in November. And then we'll bring the employee benefits to you fairly quickly, and then the AI workshop that we just discussed. So that's what we've got on our calendar for workshops, and we'll get all those on your schedule.
Thanks, Claire. Does anybody have any questions for Claire? Seeing none? Okay, thank you, Claire. City attorney?
Fine, thank you.
Okay. We'll begin this evening with Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, actually, I'll back up. Saturday, we had the drive-through lunch that Halifax Health pays for for our veterans at the senior center. Well-turned-out event. It's great to be out there for a few hours passing out lunches. I was a little disappointed that the fire didn't have the flag because I guess it was, the big flag is being utilized somewhere else. So I think we need to purchase two or three extra flags so that that doesn't happen again. I don't think they cost probably too much money, but it's always a great event when you drive through and you see the big flag hanging from the fire truck, and we didn't have that this year.
I think that's a great idea. If you need consensus on that.
Do we need consensus on that? Okay, thank you.
Last night, we attended the ribbon cutting at the new Halifax Health ER, which is going to be 21 beds?
26.
26 beds, thank you. On the corner of Williamson and Hand. You know, we talk about how overloaded our medical facilities are. I can attest, going to Advent with my mom many times, are in the hallways, they don't have enough beds, even though their building, they're probably already outgrown that. So it's nice to have an alternative for our residents to go to. 26 beds is going to be, and they can do everything but MRIs, I think is what they said?
They can do CT scans and MRIs.
Blood draws. So that was great. The mental health app that they want to bring it up, that, Chief, it's the app that the foundation wants to help provide, but I think the city's going to need to contribute to that. And it's a great app because, as we know, as veterans and police and fire, you don't want to talk to Sally, the mental health person. You want to talk to someone that has been in your shoes. And I think this is a great opportunity for our police to have someone like that. So I don't know if the foundation's going to provide that, but there's going to be an ongoing cost that I think we're going to have to utilize or have going on. I'm all for it. I think it's very important that we provide that to our first responders. I don't know if it's available to for fire, but I think we need to extend it to fire as well. I think sometimes we leave fire out. And so I don't know if that's avail, I don't know all the details of it, but if we can look into that, Joyce, I think.
We'll look into it.
Thank you. Veterans Day lunch tomorrow. Is it already this Thursday? No, Thursday, the 6th.
Yeah, Thursday.
From 12 to 2, the senior center. Another great event that'll be put on. Tuesday, the 11th, Ormond Memorial Art Museum will have their Veterans Day celebration from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They will have a great keynote speaker.
And who's the keynote speaker?
You'll have to attend to find out. We also have, what else do we have here? I tried to say National Night Out will be November 10th. At Rockefeller Gardens from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you to staff for the Doge workshop. I think it's a great starting point. It was nice to have the advisory board there as well. And Kelly, thank you for providing the budget information, and I do look forward to having that tab on our website for the Doge so that we can be as transparent as possible to our residents and help them find the information that maybe they're. Those minutes will be available on the website, but I'm not sure when, but we can provide them. And as I stated in the Doge workshop, I don't think we need to limit ourselves on going, you know, putting a threshold of we need to get to flat on our taxes, or we need to get to roll back. At the end of the day, we need to get rid of all wasteful spending and to be as efficient as possible with the taxpayer dollars. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Goodnight. Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent went over most of our events, except tomorrow is Employee Appreciation Day, so we will be there. Thank you to all of our employees. I'd like to give a quick update on the Walmart project, Steven Spraker. I'm so sorry, I know I was a pain in your butt during this entire ordeal, but they have been actively working for the past, what, week and a half, and it's looking so, so, so much better. If anybody drives by, you'll see that the landscaping has been definitely put to work this past week and a half, and I'm very appreciative of that. Ormond Beach Police Foundation, I'm really excited to see them and Mr. Lemarand honored for everything they do for this community. I'm excited to help them raise, or try to help them raise the additional $75,000 that they need. I would like to thank our own veteran Commissioner Sargent for his efforts with the Hometown Heroes Drive-Thru, feeding veterans from our own community this week. We do appreciate your service. And lastly, I think this is quite fitting with tonight's conversations. Daytona Beach offers a program where citizens can adopt a storm drain to maintain. I think it's a good idea, and I would like to possibly implement this in Ormond, perhaps with improvements. It would be a different type of Adopt-A-Road or Neighborhood Watch. Residents can proactively clear drains of palm fronds and debris, or if you're unable to, you can call the city or your HOA to assist. If you see something, say something, but on a more proactive and periodic approach rather than a week before a hurricane. There are 4,396 storm drains that are privately maintained by private or commercial property owners or HOAs, and 5,622 city-maintained drains. These storm drains flow into the Intercoastal Waterway or the Tamoca River and should be kept free of debris, grass, fertilizer, and other harmful discharge. Although the city proactively targets known problem drains, volunteers are invited to adopt a drain. I don't know if anybody has any input on that, but I did a little bit of research, and it seems to be doing a little bit of help in Daytona Beach.
I'm good with it.
I think it's great. Is that something that you would do through parks and recreation?
I don't know, maybe get some staff input on that.
Public Works?
Yeah, that seems more appropriate. And I've talked to Sean about it quite a few times, and he thought it was an interesting project that we could bring up.
I think Suzanne Schreiber with Dream Green has done that down in maybe New Smyrna Beach as well. She might be a good resource.
And it's cost-effective, it's free.
Yeah, easy.
Spread awareness.
Great idea.
I think Holly Hill is on that one.
Okay, so if we could maybe, I don't know, do we need a workshop or something to start with that? No, just, just direct staff to, okay, all right, works for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Commissioner Breyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be pretty brief. One thing Deputy Mayor Tolland mentioned earlier was the potential for bonds for stormwater. And, you know, in hearing what we're hearing, that may or may not occur in Tallahassee, that's a big question mark. It's an unknown. And that's one reason we voted last, well, three or four months ago, to go ahead and increase our stormwater fees because we don't know what Tallahassee may or may not give us. As a former commissioner has said previously in these chambers, if Ormond Beach residents feel that something is very important, they'll approve a bond to finance it, to fund it. We did it with Andrew Ramona Park, and with something as important as flooding, it may work. It will help, if nothing else, it'll help. And as Commissioner Sargent pointed out, you know, we all, we represent Ormond Beach. And my point was earlier that I think the legislature is starting to get the idea from all around the state that the flooding is an issue, not just in Ormond Beach. But he is right, we look out for Ormond Beach. So if that were to occur, if we did decide to float a bond, to be put on the ballot, we would have to come up as a city, you know, all four zones, with some sort of plan for parity throughout the zones. And Sean, I know Sean will work with us on that, to take care of it. So it is something, I guess, to consider, not knowing what Tallahassee may or may not do in the coming year, or even two years, as far as, as money for, you know, providing money to the cities for flooding. My only other issue this evening, or other comment, is this community lost a great leader in Lowell Loman last week. And the Lomans have been very philanthropic in this community. Everything from Halifax Humane Society, to Halifax Hospital, to the Ormond Memorial Art Museum, to, gosh, the Museum of Arts and Sciences, the list just goes on and on and on and on. And they have never asked for anything in return. And I was fortunate to know Lowell quite well. We, he and Nancy and I, we spent many, many days watching Florida State football games, and most of the time they won. many, many days watching Florida State football games, and most of the time, they won. And, but any case, I had a thought, and I thought I'd bring it to the commission and see what you all thought, if there's any interest. I know there's been conversation at the county level about naming roads for people. This, I'm not proposing changing the name of a road, but by chance, giving a designation, such as, for instance, what we have on Nova Road, north of Granada Boulevard, how it's designated the Robert F. Grimm Memorial Highway, that was designated by the legislature, they do that because it's a state road, the county does it for county roads, such as they did on 415. My suggestion would be to name, or not rename, but designate John Anderson Drive from Granada Boulevard to the northern city limits, the Lowell Loman Memorial Trail. So, that's just my two cents, and if there's any.
I, I mean, I like that. Any particular reason why you picked John Anderson?
Well, the Lomans live on John Anderson.
Yeah, okay, all right, I figured that.
And it's on the beach side, and they, you know, it's not too far from their new Cupola residence, so you could either do that or North Halifax from, you know, Granada to John Anderson. That would go in front of the Cupola, which the Lomans have, but it's just a thought, I think it would be a nice way to memorialize Lowell and his contributions to our community.
Deputy Mayor?
I think it's very honorable, you know, doing something like that. I'm, I would not be ready to say yes to a certain road at, right now, there may be another opportunity that we may want to consider, so I wouldn't mind discussing that, or coming up with a few other ideas first. I think sometimes, so you're considering, you're saying like a plaque-type thing.
Correct, it wouldn't be renaming John Anderson Drive.
Right, because I would not be fond of renaming a road like that.
No, I'm not, I'm not proposing renaming the road, just, you know, it would be a designation of the Lowell Loman Memorial Trail.
Yeah, I think that, that wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to something like that, especially around the Cupola, or where they lived, but I still think we should probably discuss a little bit before we make a snap decision.
I just put it out for discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, and I think the Lomans have done a, you know, a great job in our community giving back, but I think, you know, when we look at lowering the flag to half-mass, you look at dedicating roads, those are for fallen officers, for veterans, I think that if you start dedicating roads, before you know it, every road in our city is going to be dedicated for someone that has given back to our community. Nothing against the Lomans by any means, I just don't think that we should start dedicating different roads, maybe there's something else we can, can do, but I would be a no on that.
Okay, all right, well, we'll touch on it again. Thank you, Don.
Harold, why don't you come, why don't you come up with some other ideas that we can discuss?
I can, I mean, so my, my, my point with, with the road is, and again, it wouldn't be changing the name of the road, it would just be giving it a designation, such as Port Orange did with the William V. Chapel Memorial Bridge, and that was for a congressman who served the area, so, you know, again, as somebody who gave back to the community, again, I just kind of chose, I chose John Anderson, and we could also do North Halifax, because those are city streets, and we actually had the control over those, that we could rename, not rename them, but give them the designation, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Deaton?
Do you know how much it would cost to do that?
Just two signs.
Okay.
One at each end.
All right.
Do you have any other closing comments?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, it's your turn.
Thank you. I'll try to be, I'll try to be brief. First, I just wanted to thank Kelly Maguire and Chris Pyle for making a complicated subject for me, clarifying it and keeping, and making it very easy. I do appreciate the very thorough explanation of carrying over, I very much appreciate it. Congrats to Gail Lemeran and Jill Simkins, you know, they are amazing folks, very philanthropic, and I'm just blown away by the Police Foundation and what they were able to start up again, and what they're able to do for our police. So I would like to join you, Kristen, in trying to locate some funds to, to help as well. Congratulations to Kevin Gray, I know he's left, he's got a beautiful family, didn't realize he had such, so many children, on his retirement. Walmart is looking good. Commissioner Deaton, you asked me to go by and take a look, and I drove by it multiple times, and yes, cannot wait for them to clean up that wall, but it's really nice to see that natural area being, getting cleaned up. I do want to extend my sincere sympathy to the Loman family and Commissioner Riley, I really do appreciate what you're, what you're trying to do, I hope we can come up with a good, a good way of honoring Lowell. What I would like to do, if you all don't mind, I asked Robert Caroline to put together some numbers. We, we have a few residents that don't feel our fields are used, or they're underused and all, so I asked Robert if you all wouldn't mind if he would come up, just share with you some numbers on our parks and our programs, it's just a really quick, brief summary, and thank you.
Thanks, Robert, you got a minute?
Robert Caroline, Leisure Service Director, or, excuse me, Parks and Recreation Director. Basically, these are numbers that are relevant to Nova Community Center complex, the sports fields that are there at the Nova Community Center, predominantly baseball fields, and then also the Ormond Beach Sports Complex, which is soccer fields, football fields, baseball fields, softball fields. So essentially, we have had, and I want to be clear about this, the, the numbers you're about to hear are numbers for individuals that participate in the programs there, and the spectators that come to watch those individuals, and they're, they're tallied by the day, so the same person, if he, if Joey has two games a week, then he's going to be counted twice. If his mom and dad come both times, and his sister, however that is, then they'll be counted twice as well. So I just want to be clear, there, there are numbers that seem really large, which they should be, but it's, it's tallied daily, okay, so just wanted to let you know that. We have had a total at Nova Community Center, approximately 4,300, this is only for the month of October, and we will be also offering these numbers up to anyone else that'd like to see those every single month. But anyway, for the Nova Community Sports Complex, baseball fields, we're looking at approximately 4,347 visitors, total spectators were 3,105, total participants, 1,242 for the month, the month of November, ah, excuse me, October. At the Sports Complex, we had approximately 29,169 visitors, that's just for the month of October, and that breaks down, 19,000 of those were spectators, give or take, and a 7,614 participants, that's our kids, adults on the field, participating in programs. We had approximately 423 games slash practices at the, at the Ormond Beach Sports Complex for the month of November, and we had approximately games, those were predominantly run by our sports associations, shows you the volume of games and participants that they offer up. And then we also had our city-run programs, 40 total games slash practices at the Sports Complex as well. I think it's important that we also recognize that we had approximately 8,212, or 512 volunteer hours, that's the hours that these parents, these coaches, and the associations are putting in to, to provide these services and offering these programs for our community, so I thought that was pretty substantial for just the month of October.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
And at any given time, there could be up to three teams on one field for one practice, correct?
At times, yes, ma'am. Depending on the field.
Yeah, appreciate it, and, you know, I'm hoping maybe once a quarter or something, you can just share with us some numbers. I think, I think it's just important for the residents to know that we really do use our parks in recreation, and I appreciate the work.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. A couple more things, attended the stormwater mitigation meeting, just, you all need to know that the cities are still continuing to work really hard with the county, transform 386, Ormond Beach is always represented well, Mr. Finley attends those meetings with myself. They're working very, the county is working very hard to get a website up and running, where all cities are inputting their projects, and upcoming projects, so you can actually see what, you know, they don't ever want a project that would hinder another neighborhood, so you can see, like, if Holly Hill was doing something abutting to us, we would know that they're working on something. So it's a, it's a big collaborative effort. I did note with our emails, we got First Step Shelter report, and I don't know if you all had a chance to look at them and the numbers, Ormond Beach participates, but not a whole lot, and I'm just wondering, and I'm just throwing it out to staff generally, figuring out, is there any way we can utilize their services more? Even Holly Hill, in the last month or so, had 20 residents go to First Step, as opposed, I think ours was like three or four. So, anyway, it's just, just a thought to throw out there. And the last thing I want to say is some really good news, I wanted to say at last meeting, and I totally forgot, but, you know, our, our Home for the Holidays Parade is December 13th. Couple weeks ago, Kevin Bowler from Daytona Beverages reached out to me, he's a friend, and said that his company won the top award for the nation for distribution, and the award that, that he was given was the Clydesdale horses, and he offered the horses to our Christmas parade. So Robert and staff have been working to try to work that in, it's going to happen, I don't know how it's going to look, but we will have the Clydesdale horses in our parade this year, so I am real excited, and I just publicly want to thank Daytona Beverage for thinking of us, particularly Kevin Bowler and his team. So with that, I'll say goodnight.
That's pretty cool, actually. Yeah. Before we adjourn this evening, I'd like to see if Sean can come up and just give an update about the Fleming Avenue construction project, that we've gotten some phone calls about, and emails.
Yes, they had an update meeting this very afternoon to talk about time-wise, they are in the home stretch, they've laid the last pipe, I believe, or they're in the process of laying the last pipe, they are in the process, they should be done with pipe, done with heavy equipment by this week, they should have everything restored enough so the people, for Thanksgiving, so the people will have their ability to park, park their relatives and guests as they come to their homes. May not be fully restored, as far as sod and, sod and everything, but everything will be graded out, so that way, won't impact anybody's holidays, and then they'll come back. If they haven't gotten the sod laid, and full restoration will be done within the next week or two of that, so we are definitely in the home stretch, and, and hopefully out of the business of having people's lives impacted by, by construction.
Thank you, Sean. While you're there, stay up, I got another one for you. I'd also see if you can give me an update about the Andy Romano Park seawall, and we're still on track to complete that project?
We're going to bring back to you, we, we've had some issues with that project, we are going, we found out that our contractor is not going to be able to perform, we're going to bring some back, update to you that at a later date, as we're, as we're working through some issues with that currently, but as soon as we have some further details, we're, we're going to bring, bring.
Do you, you know, when do you expect to bring that to us?
I'm hoping to have it to you at the next meeting, have, have an update for you at that meeting, yes, sir.
And regarding the paid parking program, are we still on track to implement that?
I, I think Ann Margaret can answer that better than me.
Yeah, that, that's on hold, and because of the construction project, for a couple reasons, I think, I think the, it needs to be reevaluated, reevaluated on, you know, the income that it will, or maybe will or will not bring, and also during construction, the way the contract was proposed, it was going to be, the city would be paying per parking spot, well, unfortunately, during construction, a lot of those parking spots are going to be used for staging, so it really wouldn't be a good time to implement that, because we'd be paying for something that we're not using, so, so it's been put on hold.
Joyce?
If I might say so, I think the county's contract is underperforming in revenue, and so we're very concerned about that, and how those have been estimated, so we're taking a closer look at that.
Okay, that's the reason why we're concerned about the revenue?
Yes.
Because of the county and how they underperformed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, appreciate that update. Thank you, Sean. Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Have we received any response from the FAA concerning the former Riverbend Golf Course request that was submitted some months ago now? Have we received any, any information back from the FAA when we sent the letter out about Riverbend, Riverbend Golf Course? Nothing to report, Brian? Okay, appreciate that, that's Brian Rodmacher, by the way. Okay, I'd like to take a moment to thank the Ormond Beach Police Foundation for their continued support, for helping our police department obtain state-of-the-art equipment. Their efforts are truly make a difference in our community, and making our community safe. I also want to thank Realty Pros and Title for hosting an excellent community appreciation event. The costume contest was a lot of fun, and I think everyone here from the commission was here, right? For the costume contest? Right?
I was not.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right, you were, well, we had a lot of fun. The hot dogs were excellent, and the weather couldn't have been better, that was a reschedule, so it actually worked out good. Congratulations as well to all the Teacher of the Quarter recipients, and the sponsors who make that program possible. I always enjoy visiting our schools here in Ormond Beach. Each of you plays such an important role in shaping the next generation, the young people who will one day be leading and caring for our community. Thank you again, and congratulations. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak before our legislative delegation, they were very enthusiastic about all the great things happening in Ormond Beach. On behalf of myself, the city commission, and our staff, I expressed our appreciation for their continued partnership and their support in helping our city secure key appropriations. I look forward to following up with them in Tallahassee during the upcoming legislative session to review, review our city's priorities. My thoughts and prayers to Nancy Loman and the family for their loss. With that, I'll close this evening by saying, enjoy the cooler weather after a long, hot summer, and as always, please stay safe. Meeting adjourned.